Would you join me in the closing? Thank you, and I want to thank all the citizens at home, to be rightfully at home, and meeting in our meeting. So thank you, Jerry. Room call, please.
Councilmember Wong has not arrived just yet. Councilmember Shepard Roman?
Here.
Councilmember Paul?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
And there you go.
Here.
The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, the Recreation Department, and it's also on the city's website. The city welcomes public comment. Members of the public may address the city council by completing a public comment card and giving it to the city clerk prior to meeting. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any issues that are not on the meeting's agenda. And we reserve the right to put time limits on the comments. Staff, maybe ask to follow up. To ensure that everyone can hear us, please, if you approach the mic speed, go quietly into the microphone. Public comments are being accepted via email, or if you're watching on Zoom, via Zoom, you can raise your hand or make a comment. We will accept comments from those who are in. We have staff facilitating the meeting for Internet users and callers to ensure everyone can hear and participate. Please note that all comments are limited to three minutes and will be timed by city staff. And the city council is not legally allowed to engage in discussion on any item that are not on the agenda. I'd now like to ask city clerk Baker to explain how the public comment will work.
For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. All comments will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by staff. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please pull out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item.
Thank you very much. Is anyone present who wishes to speak at this time? Do we have anyone in the virtual world who would like to speak?
No, not this time.
Thank you very much. A city manager's report. Would you like to take this off, please?
We do want it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Uh, city manager, can you take that presentation off? All right. Well, I'm happy to report in this very strange world where things seem to be going crazy everywhere, they are relatively stable here. We've had nothing unusual happen over the last month financially, operationally, and we are in good shape. So let us die. Okay, so we are introducing a new dashboard, a new city manager's report. We'll be reporting key performance and operating metrics by department for the previous month. What that means is that if you look in the presentation that's available in the Agenda packet, you will see quite a lot of data in there. It all is for the preceding month. So in other words, for tonight's agenda, all the information in the presentation is for December of 2020. Over time, we'll be able to add more data, and we'll be able to compare to the month before, perhaps even the year before, but right now, we're pulling this together for the first time, so we aren't able to do as much comparative work as we'd like to. As I mentioned, the full data is available in the Agenda packet, which gets published with the whole Agenda packet. So members of the public are welcome to look into that detailed information if they are in fact so interested. Today, I'd like to highlight just a couple of things. The first thing that I'd like to talk about is a brief COVID-19 update. This is a snapshot of where we are. The information that's here relates to the number of new cases in San Marino for the positive cases. And you'll see that, although this is small font that I had memorized earlier, we went from 247 cases on January 1st to 289 cases as of yesterday. That's an average of 3.5 new cases per day in San Marino, 42 new cases since January 1st alone. And the data for today came out a little bit late, but we did add five additional cases out just today. So hopefully everybody out there, stay safe and taken care of by yourself and your community members. We're getting a lot of questions about vaccine information, and so we put the website up there for anyone at home that's interested. It's vaccinatelacounty.com. The county actually has quite a lot of information available related to vaccinations. In terms of late breaking news, which we didn't even have time to get on the slide, members of the community may have heard the governor today make an announcement that the state is changing to permit anyone over 65 to be eligible to move into Tier 1 for the vaccine, which is wonderful news. Operationally, it's a little bit more complicated than that. The LA County has to make the change as well. And the challenge that we have in LA County is more people than almost every other county. It's not every other county, so in LA County, it's taking longer to get through the queues. So at this point, we have no information about where you can go if you do want to get that vaccine if you're over 65. The county is still trying to reel a little bit from the governor's announcement today, so they don't have any updated information either. I've been in touch with them. But of course, as usual, as soon as I have additional information, we will push it out to the community as quickly as possible. All right, and then last but not least, just some key highlights for you all. In this era, community services equals community engagement. I really want to give kudos to our Community Services Department, our director Brian Howard sitting in the back. There's been some amazing efforts as it relates to our community engagement out of our Community Services Department in detail in your packet. But they're doing quite a significant number of virtual programs of trying to reach out, of trying to bring the city to the community, which we really appreciate. So big thank you for that. Also, we had a victory with our FLOP cameras. The council will recall that several months ago, we approved the purchase of some FLOP cameras. And again, in terms of late breaking news, just today, the FLOP cameras resulted in a stolen vehicle arrest. So congratulations to the police department, thank the council for approving that purchase for us. And last but obviously certainly not least, we have some heroes in fire, which of course we know already. I can't quote the specifics of the situation, of course, but I do just want to let you know that our paramedic coordinator Jess Sage was recognized by our nurse educator for the really outstanding way that he handled a situation in the community. And if I could go into details with you, I would, and you would be so proud, and I know that you are already, but it's a big deal when our nurse educator makes an effort to recognize one of our employees because they work with multiple cities and multiple organizations. And she was beyond impressed by the care that we provided. So big thank you to them as well. And that concludes my city manager's report tonight. Stay tuned next month for new operations. Back to you, Mary.
Thank you. Appreciate the first good step towards a more quantitative dashboard. Appreciate that. Do any councilmembers have any questions to the city manager and the operations for the city boss?
I do. Um, getting back to your COVID-19, uh, do we know how many residents, percentage of residents right now have COVID, in essence? What's the percentage of gotten it in the last 14 days?
Um, we do not know how many still have it. What the county reports is that there were new cases each day. Obviously, recuperation from COVID can be anywhere from a few days to some people suffering with it for months. So we don't have a recovery, no.
Yeah, they don't do the recovery. But I was just looking at, if you take a look at how many people have it over the last 14 days, the CDC, to an extent, is not running 10 days, but 14 days, those are the people who put out a people threat.
Correct.
And I'd just like to know what the percentage of that population is.
So what we know today, without me running numbers on the fly, which is always a dangerous thing for someone like myself to do, what we know is that since January 1st, which is just slightly longer than the 10 days, we've had 42 new cases. That represented about a 17% increase over what we had before, but in terms of percentage of the population, we haven't run that calculation.
Okay.
Any councilor?
No.
Thank you. Um, to staff and city council, remember, we have a goal this year to try to run efficient meetings, so I'd like you to stay on, have gone past, appreciate that. To the public, we're probably noticing we have changed the order of the agenda to try to put the more important issues up sooner, out of respect for the public's time. And then finally, I've also asked the city manager and the staff to look for more operational efficiencies and savings. And part of this ask is to look for those providing outside services to the city to make sure we're getting the best service and the best values. So you may see over the next few weeks some RFPs for legal, IT, modics, and these other things heading the street. With that said, we'd like to move now to item number one on the agenda, Presentation Proclamation for former Councilmember Suzy Kroll. We are saddened by the news of the passing of the former mayor Kroll, who is an invaluable member of the community. And I've asked Councilmember Shepard Roman, who you know really well, to say few words.
Thank you, Mayor Yudi. And welcome. I know that we have virtually attending with us tonight all the members of the families in town. We have Dawn, Gabriella, Christopher, Emily Kroll, as well as Andrew, Carrie, Thomas, and Christine. So I know that you're online, and thank you for being there. We wanted to express our sincere condolences on Mayor Kroll's passing and let you know that the city of San Marino and our community was fortunate to be the beneficiary of Suzy's great leadership, her dedication, her intelligence, and her generosity. Her long and distinguished personal and public service to San Marino is unparalleled. Suzy is certainly sorely missed by her loving family, and her passing is keenly felt by many, many in our community. Her intelligence, graciousness, perseverance, and the great sense of altruism are greatly admired and are an inspiration to many of us. And so I will always remember her and thank her for being on the forefront of adding women to the city council, but also representing the inabilities of women across all walks of life and in all different pursuits. I know that Don Jr. would like to speak, so if I may, I would like to turn it over to you, Don. And please, then, we'll come back, and I will read the proclamation that this mayor will sign in verbatim.
Okay, yeah, as you said, my name is Don Kroll, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Kroll family, and we all wanted to thank you for recognizing my mother, our mother. Suzy Kroll loved San Marino. She loved living in San Marino. She loved working in it. And most of all, she loved all the relationships and friendships she made throughout the city over the years. And my family and I, my brother's family, we're all grateful for the outpouring of cards and flowers, fun stories, and love we received from various groups throughout the city, and friends and family. So we just wanted to thank you all very much.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Gabriella, for helping coordinate for tonight. We appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
So I'm going to read the proclamation from the city. This proclamation is presented in honor of Suzanne Kroll, who dedicated more than 55 years of her life toward serving her community in the city of San Marino. Whereas Suzanne Kroll served as councilmember from April 1986 to April 1994, served as vice mayor from April 1988, excuse me, to April 1990, was the second female mayor of the city of San Marino, and served as mayor from April 1990 to April 1992. Whereas Suzanne Kroll became a legislative liaison and represented the city of San Marino's interests before the California State Legislature and the United States Congress in the 1990s. Whereas Suzanne Kroll continued her public service and led San Marino community efforts and charitable endeavors to rebuild the city of San Marino's public library from 2007 to its completion in 2008. Whereas Suzanne Kroll dedicated herself to serving and supporting the community of San Marino in the greater Los Angeles area, offering her knowledge, expertise, and support on the Board of Directors of the Huntington Hospital, the Board of the Pasadena Guild of Children's Hospital, the Advisory Committee of the Old Mill, and on the Board of Viola University, where she founded a graduate school business in honor of her late husband, Donald Kroll Sr. And whereas Suzanne Kroll was named a distinguished citizen by the San Gabriel Valley Boy Scouts of America in 2002, Citizen of the Year by the San Marino Republican Club in 1993, and California Senate Woman of the Year in 1991, among other honors. Now therefore, Ken Yudi, mayor of San Marino, will, by the authority vested in him by the city of San Marino, recognize and honor Suzanne Kroll for her long and devoted service to the people of the city of San Marino. So this will be delivered to you, and again, we offer our sincerest and deepest condolences and hope that she is resting in a better place with her children.
Thank you. Would any other councilmembers like to say anything?
Yeah, just a moment. I do have to say that ever since I've been a city councilmember, up until the last, I would say, six months, whenever I'd see Suzy in church being pushed by Christopher in the wheelchair, Suzy would always go out of her way and thank me for serving San Marino, just so gracious in her effort, and always with a suggestion on where some vegetation needed to be placed and so forth. She never gave up caring about San Marino. More than that, I know her to have been a wonderful person and a wonderful mother and grandmother. And on behalf of my family, we pray for you and know that our hearts are behind you 100%.
Mr. Wong?
Listen, I just want to thank her for her service to our city, and I'll try to follow her steps, and then she will be my role model. Thank you.
And we too honor the illustrious life that Suzy had. A role model for absolutely everyone. She inspired me when I too ran for city council. I so much appreciated her support and always, always her joyful smile. We share your loss, and we are so sorry for your family. Thank you.
And I want to thank you for sharing your mother with the city of San Marino all for contributions. So thank you. Well, now we move on to item two, which is a public hearing, the appeal of additional use.
I apologize. Do you actually need to go back and do the motion to wait for the reading?
I moved to wait for the reading.
Second. Room call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Roman?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And there you go.
Now we'll move on to public hearing, item number two on the agenda, the appeal of additional use permits, numbers CUP 20-05, CUP 20-16, and Design Review Case Number DRC 20-2983 for 2404 Mission Street.
Before we get into a discussion on this issue, I must advise everyone that I, my leasehold interest in a molestation of property, close to, whether it's 500, 504, 505 feet from the subject property, but pursuant to the regulations, because it is a leasehold interest, and after review of the regulations, I do not, I do not have a reasonable foreseeable financial effect that is material, and accordingly, I will not accuse myself.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, can you, may I be recognized and speak?
Yes, please.
I would like to move to continue this to a future date, because the city council needs further legal research and factual information before it can even make any determination on this matter. I don't know, but I would like to do it at this time before the public hearing is even open.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion to continue in a second. Call for a vote, please.
All right. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Roman?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Hiddy?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. We will, we will continue this item to get your questions in.
Continue to, to later date. Thank you. Move to item number three, adoption of potential modifications and re-instruction of the ordinance number 0-20-1369 regarding the amendment of the tree preservation ordinance. Can you please have a presentation from Director Cervantes?
Thank you, Mayor, council. The city council has directed staff to amend the tree preservation ordinance. This topic has been invited in two actions for the council tonight. This item specifically is related to the reintroduction of the ordinance for first reading, while the second action, which is later on in the agenda, is for adoption of second reading of the tree preservation ordinance, as it was amended at the December 9 hearing. For this item, the council has the option to discuss the merits of the ordinance and to include additional changes if the council sees fit. As discussed at the city council meeting on December 9, the city council may decide to add the two trees that were discussed at that meeting, and as noted in the ordinance, the addition of the definition of hazard to address some of staff concerns with respect to the elimination of the nuisance language. If the council decides to add new language to this ordinance, staff recommends the city council direct staff to make the appropriate changes and waive full reading of the ordinance and reintroduce ordinance number 20-1369 for first reading. If the council finds that said ordinance does not require any additional changes, the council may suspend action on this matter and adopt the ordinance slated for second reading during the agenda for consent, which does include the changes with regards to nuisance language, as well as the corrections to the typos which can be made subsequent. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Director. Any questions from council?
No, I don't have any question. Thank you.
Ms. Cervantes?
Uh, yeah. Director's response is, I just wanted to clarify, because I noticed in one place, you referred to two trees that I brought up, two species, I'm sorry, but it's actually, yes, listed, or the addition is the Atlas cedar, a blue Atlas cedar, and I'm trying to find the third. Oh, and the pistachio, Chinese pistachio. And so I just want, so it's actually three that would be added to the change, changes that we brought up and discussed and put out till this meeting.
Yeah, and forgive me, councilors, and I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I did miss out quite a bit, apparently, so if, of course, if the council sees fit with this specific item for us right now to make further changes, this is the time to do that and then to reintroduce the ordinance for first reading.
Right. So I just want to clarify, it's three versus two, right? And so, and then the other question had to do with a change that I suggested with you. It comes on the additional recommended change. I wanted to direct my fellow council members to page 3-7, and it talks about this top, the, you'll see almost three, three sections up from the bottom. The definition of top, my intention was to only put, to actually move language from one part of that sentence to where it is in the underline. It wasn't to have that same phrase repeated twice. So I just want to clarify, and I, that didn't make it into the staff report. So for everybody to know what I'm suggesting and change, it was to make it more clear by moving the diameter earlier to immediately after the word limbs, instead of having a trail. All right? So it wouldn't be in there twice. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Cervantes, do you have any question?
I do not, very much.
Suzy, do you have any questions?
I do. Um, I'd like to refer to, let me see where I am in the ordinance.
Can you give us a page?
Page 3-29 of our agenda. And it says, "A tree trimming permit shall be required if more than 10% of the live foliage or limbs of a mature oak tree will be removed within a 12-month period, or more than 20% of a heritage or established tree." What do you expect based on the permits that you're currently seeing, Director Cervantes, for an approximate number to, if you had to estimate what that might look like in terms of applicants?
Well, this will be a pretty rough guess, but
Sure.
we typically see about 150 tree removal applications every year. So to get a really good guess at the number that would apply in this case, we're probably looking at about half of that year one, because as you know, you know, introducing an ordinance is going to be, it's going to take some time to sort of implement and for the public to get used to it. And of course, years after, you'll start seeing that number increase. But to start off with, you'll probably see half of that in terms of application.
Okay, so year one, roughly five, six a month?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm all for protecting trees, but Director Cervantes, is, how unwieldy is this, and how enforceable is it? What's it going to do to your staff to police this?
Well, I want to say that, well, first of all, I'll say that when, when I had the city arborists under my staff, under my supervision, you know, it's sort of, it's easier to sort of manage that personnel and the administering of the program. Now that we have the urban forester in a different department, there's, I'm not going to lie, there's some challenges with sort of being able to manage that type of situation. That's been a little bit of a challenge, but it's certainly something we can overcome. This type of ordinance with respect to the additives, I guess, with the tree trimming aspect, and the various types of thresholds that are required of the residents, you're looking at a sort of a significant amount of turnout, I guess, with respect to applications. We're likely to see an increase in the amount of gardeners and tree trimmers coming to our counter, and of course, with COVID being lifted soon, or not soon, but whenever it's lifted, we'll likely see an increase in customers at our counter to be educated on this matter, as well as dealing with their applications. And so this is likely to result in an increase in staff time, as well as, of course, the arborist's time to have to go out there and educate, review these applications. And mind you, that's a new step that we're introducing, on top of having him go out and do tree removal application review process. And so you're talking about one person out in the field doing that.
So he's going to have to approve, approve it?
Right.
Okay. And how big of a change is the ordinance as it is now to what it was before, what it was in, like, 2008?
The biggest change is the thoroughness of the report, or at least the ordinance. Going back a number of different renditions, even going back to 2007, that ordinance had tree trimming permits, tree removal permits as well. The fine structure was a lot simpler, I would say, because the fine was $1,000 per violation. This version, of course, is more thorough with respect to construction mitigation measures, of course, the defining of various types of trees that we want to protect, and of course, dealing with the fine structure, that's a lot more thoroughly elaborated than it was in the prior versions.
Okay. Thank you. And no other questions? Are there any questions from the public?
No, no questions online, but I did receive, the city council did receive a letter regarding this item.
Please.
Some residents, Mr. Wallace Roswell suggested changes to the tree removal process, to make things a little bit easier for residents.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all.
And this is the letter that you furnished all of us by email, and then we have the hard copy. Is that right?
Yes, and it's also in the public's copy of the binder as well.
Thank you.
Can I bring this back to council for discussion? Gretchen, would you like to leave this on?
Sure, I just wanted to go through a couple of the changes that happened that I'm suggesting since then. I know we talked about just the change of location of the phrase, but it came to my attention when visiting the park that we have a lot of specimens, and I know Director Cervantes, both Director Cervantes and our urban forester are aware that these, they're on page 3, 7 in the middle, that those are specimen trees, let's say, and existed at the time of the planting of the park or thereabouts, because they're quite significant and still do at the time. So, and these are also trees that occurred around our city in medians as well, as parkways, as well as some homes. And so that was why I wanted to call them out specifically. And so that was why I wanted to call them out specifically, because I think they were overlooked when the initial list was made, because that was based on a specific book by Director Folsom at the time, I mean, many years ago, a few decades ago, where he talks about historic trees. And I don't think at the time, he was aware of these having not visited within the park itself, or having a list, so to speak, of the tree species there, because that came after, that was done by the city of the day. So that was why those were introduced for the first time. And I did not realize it until reviewing, actually for the other purpose, the three that I talked before about the atlas cedars and things like that are also at Lacy Park. And so that's where these other ones came up. So I apologize for the lateness, but I honestly did not realize there were specimens there that should be protected. And so I wanted to explain myself in that regard and recommend that change.
Thank you. Mr. Wong, do you have any discussion?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Tolp?
This is a perfect example of how government in a bureaucracy can screw things up when they try to simplify it. The whole idea was to simplify this process. It seems to become more and more complicated, but it can be simplified if we have a picture book with those that are oak trees, with those that are heritage trees, and when we take this in essence, boil it down for the public, either somehow on our website, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do. It's critically important, because I think the whole process was to simplify things. Also, as I mentioned last time, I wanted to take a look at whether some of these trees were indeed mentioned as part of that heritage tree in the Folsom book, which I think originally came out in the mid-'90s.
Ninety-three.
And pistachia chinesus, the Chinese pistachio, was not in there. I think to be a heritage tree, you have to reach back to a certain point, and he didn't list it. So I don't think it should be listed there, but if we make too many changes, I understand it's going to screw up the process, but I don't think we're ready to move on this tonight, anyway. I leave that to other council members. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I did follow up with Mr. Roswell after he had sent this email. Which seemed to make sense, why not get an arborist if we have a perfectly good city arborist? And we talked a little further about what some discussions he's had with friends and other people in this community. And additionally, I've heard from other residents, and although I am not a Facebook regular, when I have gone on, I have seen some postings of, if I can use my term scuff laws, on the weekends, or even from what I've heard and observed, on holidays, doing the work without appropriate permits. I think residents want to do the right thing, but I think they're scared. As I've mentioned at previous readings of this, or trapping of this, I just feel it is too complex for the average layperson. And Director Cervantes had referenced a previous ordinance that we had that was more simple and perhaps more forthright. We've had really good success on a few different fronts in pulling together citizen groups. And I just feel that members of this community know what would be, if we know what our goal is, and I deeply respect our heritage trees, our oaks, those trees that are so important that make this community beautiful. But I really would like to hear more officially from our citizens and possibly looking at something where we might just revert to a previous ordinance, study this further, using all of this excellent information, but make it something that is more palatable for residents and something where we'd be less likely for people to do, as I'm hearing a number of instances now, that they're simply doing things when we don't have staff around. I have some real concerns about that, and it does appear to be daunting to the uneducated eye. So that's pretty much where I'm at, at this point. I'd like for us to sort of regroup on this. There's a need for it, there is no two ways about it. But I think we just need to broaden our approach in how we address it.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Director Cervantes, what do you think of Mr. Wallace's email? I mean, what do you think of his suggestion?
Well, first of all, I haven't seen the email. I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, okay.
Give me a moment.
I mean, he's suggesting that the city arborist make an initial inspection of the trees and make a determination, instead of, you know, going to tree company?
Yeah, the only issue, and thank you for summarizing that, the only issue with having, you know, in this case, Ron, what he was doing in the past and what he's suggesting for our urban forester to do now is they're just going out there and just making a determination. The issue with that is, on face value, sometimes you don't know what's going on with the tree. And so if they apply for the removal of a tree, it has been the practice of Ron in the past, as well as Sam, our urban forester now, is that on face value, if the tree seems healthy, they're likely to approve a removal of a tree. And so if the applicant were to press that issue, the response from us is to request additional information from a certified arborist to identify whether there's anything going on underneath the system of the tree. And so a process by which our urban forester just makes the determination out on site is really not a good process, because you could end up having, you know, improper decisions, decisions that are made on the whim, possibly a number of appeals, because like I mentioned, likely the urban forester is to reject a lot of these applications, because on face value, the tree looks healthy.
And also, I would think to your point, the mayor's inquiry before, that would add substantially to Sam's work, and he already has a lot of work in evaluating this, and now with the permit of the tree trimming, his work will grow already, right? At the, so that would be my concern with the suggestion that was made in the letter of the resident, which I think is a good idea, had we not had this other, all these other things that our arborist, city arborist, urban forester is responsible for.
Thank you.
As I think about this again, I'm foresting the trees. I like councilmember Tolp's comment, and the effort to make it simplify. We made it a little bit more difficult, and I really appreciate, you know, all the hard work that's gone into this and the level of detail. I am concerned about the burden on staff. I'm concerned about how we're going to educate the public about this. And I'm concerned about the fines, fines seem to be, so I'm not sure what the right approach here. It might be, take a pause, compare this to a couple other air ordinances, iron out what our education program's going to look like. Councilmember Tolp suggested, you know, visuals and pictures of trees. I think we need to know what all of that looks like before we really go forward on it, or go front on it.
A may I comment, Mayor?
Please.
I do think that this is an improvement upon what we have now. And if we reflect back in this process, we are trying to answer the concerns of residents who felt like the present system was unfair in terms of fine structure, et cetera, the process. So the changes that we are making, and then the second large change has to do with the tree trimming. And that was at the request of staff, Director Cervantes in his department, as well as Director Throhman, I think, supported that, because tree trimming is where a lot of problems, even for an ongoing life of a tree, are coming from, that they're seeing. And these are, so that whole section and the complications that that involves was actually a request of staff who want to make this better for residents so that we have clear guidelines. And we're not calling the police on Sunday because there's a process of somebody hacking off a limb. It doesn't come up to residents to be policing a tree trimming process. And so once this gets in the newspaper, and once there is, and I think it was maybe two, if you will, iterations ago, there was an attachment, and there already is a draft of a very simple, direct, I'm going to say in normal English, explanation of this new that came from that staff is already working on. And so they are up to speed with putting that in action. And I appreciate Tolp's, councilmember Tolp, excuse me, suggestion of adding the pictures, you know, with the common name or whatever. So all that can be there on the website, which I think is absolutely the best place. And then if this gets in the newspaper, everybody knows that we've actually done the most good by residents because we've adopted a new ordinance that is essentially in response to their unhappiness of what's on the books now. And to lengthen the process and start with a task force is just going to get a more competitive one than we currently have. So I would...
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion, well, I don't know, we will drop, I'm sorry, councilmember Tolp omit the Chinese pistachio. And I don't know whether that's, I'm sorry, and I need Director Cervantes to tell me, the, am I, are the changes referring to the firmanese saying? And do they include the changes of the tree species, et cetera?
Let me go to the, I'm on page 3-25 to start the red line version of the ordinance. As we go to that one, 3-27 at the very top includes the Chinese pistachio. So we would strike that?
Yes, that was a request of councilmember Tolp.
Okay, and it does also include the atlas cedar and the blue atlas right next to that Chinese pistachio. Okay, and so the other pieces of that are to include the definition of hazard or hazardous, that's on page 3-26.
Right.
Will also, of course, tweak the ordinance with respect to some of the missing errors or the typos. We'll add the California Laurel Bay, 3-26.
Well, you're not adding, you're adding the words. You don't need to go through them.
Right, right. So that, so yes, that's, those would be the amendments so far.
Correct, and does this have take out the nuisance in the definition?
Yes.
So it was something that includes what we previously discussed at the council, at the meeting where you were not present?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm only making a motion to introduce on first reading with these amendments.
Correct. And with the only omission is the species that councilmember Tolp brought to our attention today, as not being in any of the historical records for the city. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Grommet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolp?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jake Baskin?
I'm just hearing too many concerns. I'm going to say no.
All right, they're reading?
Yes.
All right, motion passed.
These are the items for continuing business, the adoption of the urgency ordinance, introduction for first reading of the ordinance regulating third-party food delivery. Do you have a presentation, Director Cervantes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, counsel. The council again directed staff to introduce this ordinance as it relates to a cap on fees for third-party delivery services. We discussed this in some length last year, late last year, and introduced this topic. The council did request a couple of additional details before moving forward with this item. As requested, staff has provided the findings from our survey of local restaurants and found that a majority prefer to have such a cap in place. As drafted, the ordinance intends to provide a 15% cap on fees charged for delivery of food products. Jurisdictions such as LA, LA County, Glendale, Pasadena, which has a 20% cap at the moment, Alhambra, West Hollywood, have all adopted similar 15% caps on the food delivery services. City of San Gabriel, City of South Pasadena are contemplating similar types of ordinances with similar caps. It is worth noting and clarifying with the adoption of the urgency ordinance, by doing so, the urgency ordinance will take effect starting tomorrow. I want to clarify this, as there's some information that I had provided that was in error. This type of ordinance, being that it doesn't govern land use, doesn't fall under the same provisions of the 45-day lifespan with an additional 10-month extension beyond that. Those are typical urgency ordinances that require certain extensions. Being that this urgency ordinance is not related to land use matters, it is essentially, once adopted, it doesn't have an expiration date. So with that being said, the council does have the option to include an expiration date or an automatic repeal date of both these ordinances. And so I actually would recommend that in this case, if the council were to move forward on this. So with that said, if the council agrees with that direction, staff recommends the council motion as directed in the recommendation within the staff reports. And of course, if the council sees fit to include language for a repealing, automatic repealing of the ordinances, that can certainly take place tonight.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Mr. Tolp, do you have any question?
I have no questions.
Mr. Wong, do you have any questions?
Yes, so what would you suggest, like the expiration date?
One of the suggestions is not necessarily to put a specific date, but to have this ordinance follow our emergency proclamation with respect to the COVID. So as soon as the COVID emergency expires, this too can expire at the same time. Additionally, the council can look at adding a specific date. At this point, I'm thinking, and a year could be a specific date that we can discuss, or ending it as an emergency.
Great idea, thank you.
Ms. Shepherd-Grommet, do you have any question?
I just had one question about this last point. So this, you don't, if adopted tonight, it's not a typical urgency ordinance where it's 45 days and then there's an extension. It's a one period, one entire time period. And that's what you're getting at, is to, there's not that, I don't know what you call it, second extension or first extension of the original.
Right, so here, the adoption of this non-land use related matter doesn't require the same timeframes as a land use related urgency ordinance. It'll be in effect until it expires or repealed, or if there's a specific expiration date.
Thank you. That's it, I just need a clarification. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So I thank you for your work on this, Director Cervantes. I just want to clarify, so you actually spoke with the different owners, and they were unanimously in favor of the cap?
With the exception of...
Right. And then a point of clarification, yes, I really like the idea of coming back to it at a future point, because there is so much COVID language in it, and that would be appropriate post-COVID. Under 14.19.01 definitions, page 4-5 of our book, is it beneficial to delineate for beverages the words alcohol or not, or some reference that it would be available for either, not just non-alcoholic, I don't know? And I think that did it for me, yes. Otherwise, it seems to be complete. Thank you.
Director Cervantes, do you have any data on if sales have increased or decreased in cities that have put a cap on?
I have not had the opportunity to do that level of research. The only level of research that we've all been a part of is, of course, Colonial Kitchen's request to have this on the agenda, where they express, of course, losing income with respect to this process. That's all we have so far.
Okay. Do we know what the average check size is for the third-party deliveries? Because what we're talking about is about a 0% difference or a 5% difference.
I don't have the data for that either. I apologize.
No, because if it were a $30 check fee and if it were an $8 difference, like $2.50. So, that's not really a deal breaker.
Yeah, the only thing that was interesting during my survey was, of course, talking to San Marino Seafood, where they have this additional third-party vendor that sort of is a middleman between the ordering and delivery service. They're able to save money in that respect and reduce their delivery fee cap to under 15%, in fact, 12.5%. So, I thought that was a fairly creative event to do that. And they don't have the same issues as Colonial Kitchen has.
Right, right. Do we know how many third-party deliveries there are in San Marino?
We have about all Hooveries.
No, I mean, how many residents use third-party delivery?
I don't have that data.
Do we, do we know if third-party delivery has gone up or down in cities where there's been a cap? Do you know if third-party deliveries have gone up or down in cities that have put the cap on?
Well, that level of data I don't have. I can tell you with the COVID experience, just, I can imagine it going up, but I don't have the data with respect to outside cities.
And do we know what the economic impact on the drivers might be, or they, you know?
I don't have that data. I don't have that, sorry.
Thank you. Any more questions, Superintendent Council? Then I'd like to open up for paneling. Are there any questions from the digital room?
Nope, none at this time.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Taltz, would you like to give off the discussion?
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. I have two substantial problems with this. First, we're looking to cut the fees in half. I would prefer more of a, more what Pasadena did at 20%. And it must have a date certain. I don't want to rely on Dr. Barbara Farrar and Governor Gavin Newsom's determination as to when a, when the state of emergency is such that we can stop enforcing this law. I think that we should exercise our own decision-making authority. And I would put it at August 1, 2021, as a sunset provision.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd-Romney, do you have any comments?
About this, I think that we are here to represent the residents and our businesses. And since they are unanimous, except for the one that doesn't even use it, but the ones that we have contacted in supporting, and we do want to make sure that our businesses are continuing because there are a lot of empty locations. And I feel that it's important to have a thriving commercial presence to support the residents. And that's exactly what these restaurants do by providing food. And especially now during the COVID pandemic, they are facing unusually difficult odds by trying to struggle and hang on. So, I am forced this, and I would accept the limited time because I understand that putting it in to attach to something that may or may not happen and are reasonable. So, I would support putting it in place through August 1st.
Mr. Song Zeng, one more question. I'm sorry. How is this going to be enforced?
Not by the city. It's enforced by the vendor. It's also enforced by the restaurant who's using those vendors.
Just one more question or any comments?
Yes, so, well, I really don't like this, you know, because I believe in free market. But now, we're in special time with this COVID, so I can support August 1st. And we go in dark in August, right? So, if you want to extend this in July, is that possible?
Yeah, you would, the council would need to make extended, yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, as one of the liaisons for economic development, I want to support the businesses in town. And I think Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney pretty much stated my position, so I concur.
Yeah, I too want to support the local businesses in town, but without any data on this, I don't know if this is going to hurt them or help them. And I'm afraid it might hurt them. And I believe that people are used to paying the convenience fee for having third-party delivery. And then, the free market system would work this one out. So, I have a hard time supporting this. Do we have a motion?
I move to waive full reading and read by title only, oh, okay, and introduce and adopt urgency ordinance number O dash 20 dash 1376 dash U, an urgency ordinance of the City of San Marino, amending chapter 14 miscellaneous parenthetical of the San Marino Municipal Code to add article 19 to regulate third-party food delivery service fees and declaring the urgency thereof, and to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only ordinance number O dash 20 dash 1375, and ordinance of the City of San Marino, amending chapter 14 parenthetical miscellaneous of the San Marino Municipal Code to add article 19 to regulate third-party food delivery service fees, and to terminate with a date certain of August 1, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Or if I, is that...
If I, if I may, Councilmember Romney, I hear that we want the August 1, 2021 expiration date. And I can just suggest a friendly amendment to your motion, such that for the urgency ordinance, to add section seven that says, "This ordinance shall terminate on August 1, 2021," and for the non-urgency ordinance, to add section six that says, "This ordinance shall terminate on August 1, 2021."
Thank you. I would accept those friendly amendments from our city attorney.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz?
No.
Vice Mayor Jake Vasky?
Yes.
Mary Yeady?
No.
Thank you. Motion passed.
I have a motion. I move to make the same motion as Councilmember Shepherd-Romney with the same amendment plus changing the limitation to 20%.
Is there a second? For reference, market is about 22 to 25%. Is there a second to that? Here he is then. Move now to new business?
Can I, the motion did not pass?
The motion did pass. Thank you.
But not the agreement?
Sorry, can I, yeah. The urgency ordinance required at least a four-fifth vote because it's an urgency ordinance. However, the regular ordinance only required three votes, which have received to pass.
So, the urgency did not pass?
The urgency did not pass.
Okay. And, but I will amend the request with respect to the urgency with the same motion as Councilmember Romney, but with, and the amendment, but with a limitation at 20%.
And just to be clear, this is just for the urgency?
This is just for the urgency.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Could I have a point of clarification? So, if the urgency does not pass, but the non-urgency passes, what does that mean?
What that means is that we would bring it back for next meeting or in February for second reading and then going to affect 30 days later. So, we're probably looking at a March effective date.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Can I ask another point of clarification? If the urgency passes, it would be effective immediately at 20% and because the regular motion passed, let's say, for, then it would switch at that time to 15%?
City Attorney, can you confirm?
So, there would actually be a conflict in that instance because if the urgency passes with the 20%, it would go into effect immediately at 20%. And then, when the non-urgency becomes effective after 30 days post-second reading, you would have a conflicting ordinance that has 15%. So, my recommendation is that council agree to one of those percentages so that there is not that conflict later on down the road.
Well, if there's a second, can I withdraw my motion? Or does it have to go forward? I'll withdraw my motion on the urgency and just handling regularly. But...
Would you like to do a roll call again then?
Well, he's withdrawn, so there's no motion.
If you withdraw, you're second.
Yes, I'll withdraw.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion up here. You see, we just move forward through a second reading process.
Okay. So, just to confirm what's happening from now on, we'll be bringing this back to you in the second reading. It will include the August 1 sunset and it will include the 15% cap. You'll have to do second reading on that. If you approve it on second reading, then we're going to affect 30 days later.
That's correct.
Should I, well, it's already passed, right? It did.
It seems like if you want to help the restaurants waiting another 45, 60 days is not to accomplish what you really want to, you know, and I'm against it for free market reasons, but if you want to, you know, help them out.
Well, there's three quarters of four vote for emergency. Oh, yeah, we don't have that.
All right, we move on to next item.
Moving on to new business, item number five, which is the introduction of first reading of an ordinance regarding roofing materials. Director Cervantes, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As directed by council, staff has amended the building code to reintroduce natural wood shake and shingle roofing material to the city's codes. Staff has provided provisions to allow for the products to be used throughout the city again, but with certain fire safety provisions that are built into the building and fire code of light. If the council agrees with staff's direction as indicated in the ordinance, staff recommends that the city council waive full reading of the ordinance, introduce for first reading by title only ordinance number 21 dash 138, and adopt the resolution of findings number R-21 dash 01 for local amendments. I open for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Romney, do you have any questions?
Do you have any of these materials in the town right now? Any houses in witness?
Well, yeah, there are a lot of existing natural wood shake and shingle now.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd-Romney?
No, thank you very much. You're up this morning.
Mr. Taltz?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Quick question. Under the ordinance for exception, second paragraph where it says notwithstanding section 1507.8.5, it says at least Class A. So, what would be above Class A?
There is no standard above Class A.
So, could at least be removed and just have Class A so that there would be confusion because of the way it reads at least Class A? That at least means to believe there could be something above that, like A-plus or whatever?
Certainly, that can be done.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I have no questions. Thank you, Chief and Director. Are there any questions? Are there any comments from the public on this item?
No, nobody looking to speak on this item. City Council did receive an email from Mr. Michael Johnson where he posed questions for city council's attention and those you received previously and it's also in this report.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to bring this item back to council for discussion. Do I have any comments or questions, fellow?
None for me, sir.
Mr. Shepherd-Romney?
Yes, I just wanted to bring back to our memories that the planning commission and design review committee have been dealing with the roof material issue. And there have been many instances, I'm sure Director Cervantes can confirm as well, since it's in his department with this very issue. So, this is important that we take this step and bring the shingles back as an alternative because the amount of roof materials that are available to our residents is extremely limited.
Thank you. Mr. Wong?
No, I just want to thank Director Cervantes and Chief Rida for your work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No questions? Thank you.
I have no questions either. Is there a motion?
Motion to read by title only and introduce ordinance number O dash 21 dash 1380, an ordinance of the City of San Marino, amending the city building code relating to roofing materials and amending chapter number 25 of the San Marino City Code and to adopt resolution of R dash 21 dash 01.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jake Vasky?
Yes.
Yes. We move on to item number six, approval of the upgrades to the performance center expenses of city manager morale.
Yes, thank you very much. I apologize that I'm not all there. I know you've been present here in the city, helping to a slight like to know where it was at historically. First, I should clarify, as the mayor just did, that this area really is not understood to be a gym. It's really better understood to be a physical conditioning space, primarily used by our sworn employees to stay in shape to perform their job responsibilities. Located on the city hall site, access is restricted to employees. Several months ago, I became aware that the city does not actually have responsibility for maintaining that conditioning facility. The cost of maintaining that facility and the equipment has been handled previously by the police and by the employee unions. That's a potential liability for the city, given that any injuries sustained there as a result of poor equipment qualify as workers' compensation, that the city would be financially liable for. I'd ever ask Finance Director Chong to begin looking into what would be involved with taking over the management and operation of the facility. And as you can see in your staff report from the Finance Director, there are two associated costs. One is a regular maintenance cost. It would be approximately $1,380 per year additional annually, and then one-time purchase to upgrade equipment, which is approximately $15,700. This is also an employee morale issue. It conveys the city's support for employees' mental and physical wellness, particularly at a time when their services are needed by our community most. As councilor Paul you all were very clear with me during my annual performance evaluation process, that employee morale is, of course, very important to you and that I should be proactively pursuing efforts on this front. So, as a result, I'm delighted to bring this item to you. For both risk management and employee morale purposes, I recommend that the city take over the management, maintenance of the conditioning facility. If you confer, the appropriate motions may be found in Finance Director Chong's staff report on page six, page three, and HR Manager Pilkton are available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Taltz?
What are you going to do with the equipment that's there?
The equipment that's upgraded, that gets replaced?
The equipment that you're replacing, weights and so forth.
We just listed for the process for disposing of excess is a term for this. No longer needed materials like lighting on a precise term. Stephanie probably knows what we do, but we dispose of it per our city protocol.
So, in essence, be sold?
Probably, if there's useful lighting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wong, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd-Romney, any question?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for investigating this and bringing this forward to our attention. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a quick question. I was naive in not knowing about this. I'm glad that we have it available. So, it's an area that is separate from both police and fire, but on our campus and used by both?
Yes, it's technically attached to the public works area in the back part of Montigny City Hall.
Okay. And what is the maximum capacity that it is facing at this point in terms of use? I will tell you frankly, I don't know what the normal maximum capacity is, but we are not near that at the moment, given COVID. We're serving distancing protocols
and there are face coverings and so forth. So, given the space, I would say probably no more than three at a time would be my guess.
Chief, is that sounding about?
I think that's probably correct. It's a smaller, so three. And then, some of the equipment is moved outside when there's, when there's additional people.
Okay, so the safety issues are addressed?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you. We take that very seriously.
One question. Is it okay to do with council?
Thank you. I'd like to open up for public comments. Do we have any?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Wong, you have any comments yet, please?
No, I, no, I favor this to promote the mental health of the city board.
Mr. Shepherd-Romney?
I also second Councilmember Wong, you're the support for our employees who remain physically conditioned for their work and their mental health. So, I support this strongly.
Mr. Taltz?
I join Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, Councilmember Wong in their support of this project.
Vice Mayor?
Yep.
I just think this is a good project. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve, number one, approving one-time upgrade expense of $15,700 to the city gym, and two, approve the annual maintenance services in... city gym, and two, approve the annual maintenance services and miscellaneous repair expenses of $700 of the remaining six months of this fiscal year, and three, appropriate $16,400 to account 101-53-4150-0000 for another contract services close print from general fund reserves for such items. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yee?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Motion passed.
We move on to item seven, introduction of first reading of an ordinance regarding public nuisance proceedings. We have to go over.
Yeah, thank you. Last one. So staff essentially requesting the council consider a code amendment that streamlines the process for staff to declare a public nuisance. Currently, as you read the staff report, declaring a public nuisance has a variety of steps, including involving the city manager, having a public hearing for the planning commission, and that does take a little bit of time, and we're looking for a more streamlined, efficient process. And the code amendment that we're proposing in fact does that by reducing the timeframe significantly. And so as a result of this code amendment, it does allow for our code enforcement officers and myself to declare the public nuisance and really moving forward with getting properly cleaned up or abated in terms of violation. So if the council agrees with staff's recommendation and the draft ordinance, staff recommends the council move to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only ordinance number 21-1379, an ordinance of the city of San Marino amending the San Marino municipal code related to nuisance abatement. And lastly, just for reference purposes, page two of the report or page 7-2 of the packet provides a pretty good summary as to what I mentioned as far as the efficiency and timelines. I have no questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions in council? Ms. Shepherd-Romey?
No questions. Thank you for bringing this forward, Director Spontis.
Thank you, Mr. Tal. I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Wong? Thank you for being on top of this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I waited my whole life for this. It'll make me much more calm on my morning walks. Thank you. I do have a number of points of clarification, and thank you so much for submitting this to us. So I can work off of it a few different ways, but it says, for example, they have 15 days to abate. If the conditions remain, would it be helpful to arrive as early as the 16th date? So we're not giving you a grace period. Some way to state that perhaps? And then similarly, staff may think remedy of the conditions by procuring an outside vendor to remove the conditions. Would it be helpful to have some kind of timeline on that within 30 days or 60 days or whatever you would need? I would just like for the subject parties to know how quickly this can move along. And then moving over to the ordinance, section two, determination of nuisance, to notify property owner and occupants by mail, I guess under property owner at the address of record. And similarly, such notice shall be served by personal service or by first-class postal service and should be posted on the subject property in a conspicuous location within so many days or, you know, again, to know that we've got a specific timeline there. At the hearing, I have no problem with community development director conducting the hearing. It looks like it may be the director alone with the parties. What kind of record keeping will be used so that there will be a record of the hearing?
We'll use our code enforcement software. We use the code enforcement software to identify the various stages of the process.
So for the hearing, the party will know that all proceedings from the hearings will be, the hearing will be fully documented.
Right.
And the same thing over point, or 08.0306, hearing to establish costs. If the city shall have the nuisance abated, a hearing shall be held before the city council. I think, again, that would be helpful to state within X amount of time. I think we just want to be perfectly clear with the parties that we are pursuing, this is what the timeline looks like. Otherwise, I just think it's absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions. Do we have any comments from the public?
No comments or requests to speak.
At this point, I'd like to bring it back to council for a discussion. Mr. Wong, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share?
No, no question, no comments, no.
Okay, okay. Ms. Shepherd-Romey?
No comments. I appreciate that Vice Mayor Jacobowski made some important additions that will help that the process runs smoothly, and I agree with those changes. So I don't know that any of them were substantive, since we didn't really change anything. It just matter inserting some of the language due to timeline, that's the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tal. My only concern is any due process problems that might exist. What I would like to see is an addition in here that should the, should the property owner request, should the property owner decide or desire to have a written record of the hearing, they should bring their own court reporter at their own cost. Something of that sort. Unless we're going to have the hearings in the chambers and you could audiotape that.
Well, at the moment, they would be zoomed, so those would be recorded. But after poker, we can certainly have them in the council chambers rather than in my office.
I just, I just want to make sure that all the, everything's properly recorded because ultimately this is going to end up as a lien on someone's property.
Right.
So if we could find some language in here to add that the hearing will be audio recorded. If that's acceptable to the city attorney.
That could be, if I ended this discussion and there is a motion for that, along with motions to add the other two recommendations from Councilmember Jacobowski, we can certainly do that. I do want to note that Councilmember Jacobowski's request was just in a conspicuous location within X amount of days, and I don't have direction as to how many days, and that would be something that council should clarify, should that be a motion for the limit for this particular draft.
Okay, thank you. I think I would go back to Director Cervantes on that one. I was certainly leading it to his discretion, but if we are looking at an ordinance, it shouldn't have X days in it. So if you might take the recommendations to my suggestion, what would be appropriate in a few places on the number of days?
Yes, so if we had two options, we can either bring this back with some of those details, and we can discuss this at another council meeting, or some of we can discuss it today, and you can take my suggestion, of course, and make your own. But at this point, section six, as was described, a hearing for council to have a certain time period, at this point, I'm thinking probably 30 or 40 days to have that agenda.
So to be safe with agendas, and should we honor when we are supposed to be dark, even though we usually aren't? Is 40 days adequate?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, so we could put 40 in there, and then there was, it's acceptable to state as early as day 16 if the conditions remain. And then other place, similarly, the you having the hearing as community development director shall have a hearing, so before goes council. Is it in here within how many days you need to schedule the hearing? If not, I think we need to put a timeframe on that, too.
It's 10 days is what the ordinance says down.
I see they have mail to the owner of the property 10 days prior to the subject hearing date. Is that clear on how many days from the day that you have decided you're pursuing the hearing to when it must occur? So we know that the mail needs to go out 10 days prior to the hearing, but do you have a maximum number of days with which the hearing can be scheduled? Say 30?
As far as a hearing with myself on these matters, it can still be 10 days. So we would need to add that language.
Okay, so where it says under 80303, community director, community development director shall conduct a hearing on the alleged public nuisance within, say, 10 days, and that means then the notice would go out immediately.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'm going to withdraw my suggestion regarding the audio of the hearing before you, because actually, when I take another look at it, they have an opportunity to appeal what ultimately would be the lien against the property of the city council and the city council audio. We do tape our meetings, so it's not necessary. The only consideration you're making, will make is the existence and the abatement of the nuisance and not the costs associated with it. So it's not necessary for a due process. Thank you. Is there any other thoughts or comments?
Have I covered all of my date periods? Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
If I could, council. There are a handful of outstanding changes that Vice Mayor Jacobowski has recommended, and I think that would be most prudent for staff and I to work on adding that language into the appropriate places and then bring that back to consideration of first reading.
Does it make sense to you, Mr. Cervantes? Makes sense to the council? Yeah, it does to me, yes.
We want to get it right, and we want to have the subject party to certainly have clear, specific information on timeline. So I also am comfortable with.
Excellent. Continue and bring it back to us. We move on now to item number eight, the approval of all public tree removal lists. Director Trump?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is our semi-annual request to remove city-owned public trees that have been identified as either being dead with no hope of recovery, those that are effectively dead, and those that are diseased and pose a threat to the public or other nearby healthy trees. The city's street tree policy requires city council approval before the department can remove public trees and review by the city council tree liaisons, who are currently council members Shepherd-Romey and Wong. The city's urban forester, Mr. Sam Estrada, performed an assessment of each tree that includes basic data on the tree, observations about its health, and a recommendation of the risks involved with the tree remaining in place. The urban forester receives many requests from residents to remove dead trees from in front of their property, and this list includes their requests when our analyses and evaluations have confirmed the need to remove them. This past calendar year, the department removed 73 trees, including 36 approved by the city council. We also planted 112 trees, including 38 24-inch box trees, for a net gain of 39 trees. The trees removed based on the list before you will be replanted. Mr. Estrada is here to answer any specific questions related to his analysis in the list before you this evening. I would like to thank the council tree liaisons for their participation in reviewing each tree on the list, and it is the department's recommendation that city council approve removal of the trees identified by the department. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions? Mr. Wong?
Yes, so after we plant these trees, how long does it take for it to get to, you know, the same level that we're at here now? That's a great question. It all depends on the tree. And a very large tree, I'd say about 100 years. A smaller tree, I'd say about 20. I can get a street line with a nice canopy in about 15 years. A 24-inch box like Mr. Wong just mentioned, that's where we started to plant. Those can give you a nice, more interesting renovation a lot faster. That's a kind of a hard question to answer.
Okay, I did go to, you know, see like the majority of the trees, and I agree with some of them, but stuff I know, like, for example, on number, item four, Del Mar, in fact, 1955 Del Mar, large oak tree. Yes, so, I mean, even from this picture, it's great. I mean, I know it's winter time right now, so some of the trees I saw were brown, but I don't know, this one seems okay.
Well, this oak specifically, at 1955 Del Mar, west side of the street, the picture, as I just looked at it myself, it doesn't show what the tree really looks like. That tree is dead, or it's not dead, going to be dead by the next time I come to council. It's in a forested decline, and in my opinion, I'm recommending it for removal.
So if we wait for a year or two, it would get better? No.
None of the trees that I put on this list will get better. They are in a state of decline and are dead. They're on their way to be dead.
Okay, I don't know if people checking that and see if me and my other liaison would go check all these trees, but I couldn't find 1880 Sheffield.
That tree is actually.
Is it on Rose or is it on Sheffield?
No, it's on Sheffield. It's the second tree in, it's basically dead. I couldn't find it myself, believe it or not. It's engulfed in about three other trees. There's a pine tree and an oak tree, and they kind of, they all blend in the canopy. That's a tree that's dead, I love that tree. Big green, I tried to marble, so they're clearly visible from the street. That, I admit, sir, that tree was a little hard to recognize while driving by, but nonetheless, it's dead.
Okay, Mayor, can I, you know, I have more questions later, maybe I'll let the others ask first.
Can I comment on number four? I also reviewed all the trees in person and no small task, and so I understand, and thank you for the incredible amount of work that this takes, and I appreciate it because I think it's so important for our city and for our residents, because these are often, you know, substantial trees in front of their homes and they grace our neighborhood. My concerns have to do with five of the trees specifically that are all oaks. I know we had 43 total across all of the requested removals, and I know that 11 of those are oak trees. I agree with and have the same concerns regarding number four, and I just wanted to ask, that's the oak on 1955 Del Mar, and in the, this report dated 7/24/2020, which is in our packet, you mentioned that it's, if people want to call it, it says attachment 2-14 at the top, but I don't know how it is in the pronunciation for people online, that that particular one, it actually says that it's only 50% in decline. So I was surprised that this would even be here because, if you look to the tree defects and conditions, or 50% overall dead, and it did not seem to say that there were any underlying rust, rot, or other issues like that, and the trunk is not damaged or cracked. So for me, this is exactly the type of effort tree that we should put effort into preserving because it will not be replaceable easily. It's of significant size. And more importantly, the residents and myself, this is an oak, and I think we have a declining population already among private yards. As you know, I saw some tree removal permits today from across my email, as well as our own city trees. So I'm very much an advocate for letting the ones that seem to be surviving survive a little longer because also this year with the smoke and the fire and the heat, I would hope that they would get through a winter if we have any water, and that will make a big difference to their current condition. So when we drive by, it was hard to assess the total amount of percentages, but I went through, and none of these, I'll make the last point, it's tree number four, tree number 18, 21. it's tree number four, tree number 18, 21, 26, and 30. 26 and 30 are the ones that I would request that we remove and give them additional time, at least through the winter, and evaluate them next year. And the other point I was going to make is...
Sorry, counsel, can I disconfirm? You said four.
Tree number four.
18.
You want me to give you their addresses?
No, no, no. 18, 21, 26, and 30, correct?
Correct. And they are four California live oaks of significant size and stature. They are all low risk for any danger to the community, and that, I think, has to form our decision-making in large part because we obviously, and I know that the party does an excellent job in trying to protect our community even with the emergency pre-removal. But all of these, as I read the reports, they were not all dead, and as I visually inspected them, they were in various conditions that kind of look like oak trees at this time of year. And none of them are at risk of any limb drop, failures, or have any of those things listed as their condition. So I just wanted to support everybody to give them a chance and at least get through winter. One of them, as a matter of fact, number 26, was already on our list, and we spoke about it and decided to let it stay. It's the granddaddy one on Lorraine Road. And so it hasn't even been given a year to see if our winter cycle gets some water and see if it will provide. So I don't know, we have not established a procedure in that regard, and so I, it's not, I was hoping that we could have a discussion tonight and then decide what would be appropriate, a year or whatever would be the timeframe before you spend your time and go out and reevaluate a tree that we said we wanted to keep in May. Do you know what I mean?
I do, and I don't think, in my opinion, we can wait. But the tree that you're talking about, does it mean 26?
Yes.
On Lorraine Road?
Yes.
You can wait an indefinite amount of time. And that tree will not come back in any way. The other trees, I have no problem with letting them decline further because that's what we're going to do. Hopefully, we do get some rain, and just hope for the best.
Well, I understand, but I think the one that's on Lorraine, I'm sorry, I'll give it, because there's two on Lorraine that are involved that I'm asking for more time. The 2580 is that extremely large one that's located by the wash. Because as you know, the wash has got no water for the last six months, and obviously, it's such a significant tree. I think that it needs an opportunity for that, for at least the winter season to see if that will help provide it. Because it does have green, I think. We've been friends of opinion throughout. But it's not growing vigorously. But if I was 100 years old, I don't expect I would be as vigorously growing as I would at some earlier time. So that was what I was going to ask councils and developers, and I wanted to bring you into the conversation in terms of reevaluating trees and to thank you for your work on this because it's a lot. And I appreciate you tending the health of our urban forests.
Believe it or not, I take pleasure in it. Exactly. Not I enjoy to do. Thank you.
And then I had a question for you, so this was leading to a question for you. Do you think that it was worthwhile for us, and I don't know, so this is, I'm throwing this out to counsel. If we had evaluation and these were declining tree, oaks in particular, is there something that an arborist report, or you can recommend a supplement, et cetera, some treatment for the tree, and what the price range would be to how that is part of our annual? I know we have a very large contract with Mariposa, I believe. That's over 200, or almost 250,000, 249?
Sure, yeah. Most of the trees that are in decline, the oaks, they're in parkways where overwatering tends to be the issue. But that's private. People like aesthetics, and they like green grass, and they, that's really the detriment to the oak tree. It's really hard to balance that. And last time I spoke before you, I did mention that I was changing the type of oak tree because habits don't change. So I really had to kind of modify my palette to still give you the canopy that you're looking for and not create a, well, repeat the same problem from oak fungus and just these things that overwatering, overwatering tend to have on oak trees. That's, we used to have a mulching program where we would encourage residents to maybe create a 10-foot gap between the lawn and the base of the tree, and we would allow them to place bark up there. As long as no water was touching the tree, I mean, that's one program that I think would be very beneficial immediately for oak trees, specifically oak trees. That's the only thing that would come up on the line.
Okay, and so we don't have that, just so I understand, so that would take action by council to bring that program back?
Yes.
If council would align?
That, yes, I would assume so.
Okay. And that would be something you would recommend for the health of our park?
I think that would be a quick, easy for residents to want to contribute. It's not too crazy of money, because they would have to put some money out to get their gardener to go out there and modify the irrigation, so we're asking something of them and hope we can provide them with a tree for a long-lasting time. It is an asset to their property, so we were hoping that they can actually, well, we would hope that they would want to contribute that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Any questions?
I just disagree on 26. As much as I love that tree, I walk by it four times a week, five times a week, and I avoid walking under that tree. And I have talked to neighbors, and some of them are very concerned about the tree. It is a lovely tree. I wish we could keep it. The sooner we get it out, the quicker we get something in its place. And if it's your assessment that, you know, pull the plug on the tree, then perhaps we should. I remember that we continued it, said, let's give it a little more chance, but I've been watching it, and it doesn't look like that chance is working out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any questions?
Yes, please, thank you. Thank you for the significant amount of work on this. It talks about several emergency tree events. I remember there was one on Oak Knoll, where I think Edison had already done a report, and before there could be action, the tree fell over. Is that accurate? In the last 12-month period, about how many emergency tree removals has the city had overall, where we had to, without notice? Pick up pieces of...
Three.
Three, okay. I just have some real concerns about my role in this because I have absolutely no ability to discern, and I totally understand our love of our trees. And unfortunately, counsel has heard me at every one of these discussions talk about the two Southern California residents who were killed as trees fell over. And I'm just really not comfortable in weighing in on this because of the fear of that happening. And if we did end up with three trees this year, I would really hate for it to not be any one of them that is on our list. That's really all that I have to say.
Thank you. Mayor, can I ask a question off that? How many of those three trees were healthy?
All of them. They all had very big, they were all oaks. They looked fine on the outside. There's no way to really tell until you really investigate. But they looked beautiful, large, green canopy, no dead, and they toppled over. So they were all, they were all live oaks, and that's the trees we're talking about. So, and they were all, it was all rot. They all failed with a trauma, which means that they toppled over. They didn't break a limb. They literally failed in their entirety.
So they were not healthy? They were all declining?
They appeared to be healthy, and I pass by them every day, and this is how, it takes a lot to investigate. It's really hard to determine how much decay is not coming in a tree just by looking at it. It does have the appearance of being a healthy oak tree, and they all had that appearance, except they failed.
If I recall correctly, from 2011 windstorm, I heard most of the trees that collapsed were all healthy trees, actually not declining trees or whatever. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I have one question of the city attorney. And Stephanie, if the tree is on this list and if it's not removed and if it causes damage, do we have any liability?
In that circumstance, the city could be liable.
Right, the city can be liable for any tree that falls over. Am I correct in that assessment? If it's a city tree, being on the list or not is my point.
So the city generally does not incur liability for the condition of a public property, like tree, unless there is a dangerous condition, and that condition was due to either the negligent act of a city employee or if the city had noticed of the dangerous condition in sufficient time to have taken protective measures. But it is a case-by-case specific inquiry that would need to take place.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up for public comments. Do we have any?
No public comments or requests to speak.
I do. Open it up for council discussion. Mr. Gold?
I think my comment during the question period, it appears that 418, 21, and 30 can wait, and the rest, I think should be...
Mr. Wong?
Yes, I want to thank our urban forest for putting up this list. And I'm a tree specialist, I'm a food specialist. You'd be surprised how many teeth I say, you know, we can wait and we can interrupt. But I think I can support this with, you know, except those five recommended by council member Shepherd Romey. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd Romey?
Thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Estrada for your work on this, as well as, I know, Michael Rowe's department putting together the map and everything. I think that will assist, I assume, and I appreciate it. I feel strongly that I would like to give the oak that's on Lorraine this winter because I really feel that this has been a very stressful, terrible year, and it seems to me to be the similar condition that it was in May, and it has yet to be, we all well know, has not been given a chance to gain back anything. I would be, feel that the trees, that their beauty and health adds so much, and that this particular landmark tree that I think predates probably even our city streets. So I would like to do what we can, and if it still does not thrive after this winter season, then I would ask if Mr. Estrada would bring it back to us for removal. But that was my request, and...
Your request is to have it looked at in March, April, May, June, or some...
April, whenever after the end of whatever potential rain season we have, and bring back a recommendation at that time for the date of removal. And that could be on a consent calendar. I would be fine with that, if it is not changed. I understand.
Vice Mayor?
I have no further comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm obviously not an arborist and need to rely on the experts. So if the expert is comfortable with leaving 418, 21, and 30 off of the list, and if he's comfortable, you know, giving that 26 a three-month lead, then I would be comfortable with it.
I don't have a concrete decision ultimately, it's yours.
Right.
I would just resubmit it. That's all I would do. I mean, I have a running list of trees I'm going to submit. I just would put them right back on that and go back and reevaluate them again. I have no problem.
Is there a motion?
Let me, I think I have an idea.
Yeah?
I move to approve the fall 2020 recommended tree removal list, except for 418, 21, 26, and 30, and authorize the director of Parks and Public Works to move forward to properly remove the trees on this list. With respect to tree number 26, that we continue its determination until our first meeting in May 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Romey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski? Good day. May I?
Yes.
Thank you very much, counsel.
Okay, we move to the consent calendar. Would any council members like to pull something from the consent calendar?
Yes, I would like to pull item 15.
15. Then where else? You want to pull it, Harvey?
Yes. The agreement?
Vice Mayor?
I'm trying to get my numbers here.
May I also ask a question concerning one of the consent item calendars? That I understand a public comment request has been made. If it's not pulled, does that person still have an opportunity to speak? Or do I have to pull it on every round?
Actually, once the resident understood that the item was on the consent calendar, they recalled their request to speak on the item.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that they, if they want to be heard, they would.
Vice Mayor?
I'll call, please.
I'll call.
Free comment.
Is there a motion then to approve items nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 16, and seven?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Romey?
I'm sorry. Yes, I was, did what more about...
You were amazing. I understand. Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
All right, I should pass.
What are your questions? But item number 12, please.
Oh, thank you. I think most of this will be for Chief Rueda. I may have one or two PD comments. In reading the discussion under Fire Department, I guess I could say that it reads in somewhat an alarming way, and a 91% increase from December over November. And based on the numbers we heard earlier today, it looks like, and please correct me if my assumptions are wrong, we could be close to a 200% increase over two months. Is that accurate?
I don't have those exact numbers, but I can tell you the increases have been remarkable over the last month.
And, I mean, if we're seeing 30%, 36% of COVID responses occurring in December, are you seeing that trend changing or becoming any less in these first days, first two weeks of January?
So since December, late December 22nd, we've received nine directives from our regulatory agency, EMS agency. And those directives have either been pointed towards keeping people, keeping us from transporting people to hospital that don't have a high likelihood of survival or should remain sick at home. The others, the other directives have pointed at limiting resources such as oxygen to some patients. The other thing that's occurred has been the hospitals. Our hospitals have all developed surge plans and have all changed the way they do business. They, our own hospital here, Huntington Memorial, that we frequent, that we frequent, has developed at least a community letter that alerted people to the potential for, at some point, triaging patients, which, in my experience, is unprecedented. Huntington Memorial also is day-to-day or specialty care. Huntington Memorial is a world-class hospital. They do catheterizations there for heart patients. They do invasive stroke procedures. They are one of the few hospitals that has all these specialties, including trauma. They're day-to-day on whether they can actually accomplish those for patients coming in. And they let us know in the morning whether or not we can take patients there. The hospitals have all also asked for support from other, from fire agencies. So we have a number of hospitals here in Southern California that have paramedics and firefighters working that have volunteered from other parts of our state to support those, to support those hospitals. Our own experience here has been very sick patients. Uh, our own experience here has been very sick patients, in, residents in town. Um, unless they're critical, uh, the hospitals are asking us not to transport those patients until they get to, you know, life-saving levels. Um, and, uh, and lastly, the, uh, the, the hospitals and the EMS agency, which regulates us, have developed surge plans so that in the event we get multiple patients in a hospital stacked up, that the hospital can admit, that, uh, they've given us additional authority to leave, uh, multiple patients with, uh, a single unit, which that would never have occurred previously. Um, so there's a number of things occurring in our, in our, uh, emergency medical services system that are really unprecedented, and to, to most, um, where you sort of stand on issues depends on where you sit. So from where I'm sitting, where the firefighters sit, and our physicians sit, our nurses sit, they're seeing dramatic changes in our system and, uh, close to being overwhelmed. But if you're not in this system, you're, you're just not seeing it. Um, so, uh, well, this week, we saw a plateauing, which was, which was really, uh, pleasant for us, but they are expecting an additional surge, uh, in the near future, we'll have to see. Um, that's the Reader's Digest version of the article that I gave Mitch this week, but, um, there is no magic bullet other than the vaccine, and what we've seen from the vaccine in some of the fire agencies is that the transmission rate in the fire stations is actually plateauing and declining with the vaccines. So that's good news. Um, I wish I had better news about the vaccine distribution, you know, but we're getting a number of different pieces of information about, about the distribution of vaccines. All of our firefighters have been trained to, to be able to administer that vaccine, so in the event we do get vaccines available for residents or others, uh, that we would be able to issue those. I'm available for any questions.
This is alarming, thank you. Um, and where ninety-one had to wait for three hours, we've certainly heard about that at other hospitals. And I know basically, Verduco can move cities around for mutual aid, but it's not beyond the realm of possibilities that if you each get tied up in a hold pattern, there are, there could be no emergency vehicles, correct?
That was the reason I discussed the hos- the surge plan at the hospitals, and the flood components have developed where one ambulance may be, uh, looking after eight patients.
So has that begun?
Pardon me?
Has that begun?
It began two days ago.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the detailed, um, sobering and upsetting report.
Do any other council members have any questions or comments regarding item twelve?
No, thank you.
If, if no, is there a motion?
I approve to, um, approve, um, the-
The motion is I move to receive and file the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one report on the city's response to COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Indeed, so.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Ron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
And regarding item fifteen, would you like a staff presentation?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, that's not necessary. Um, I brought this up because I think that the staff report mischaracterizes the vote that we had, um, and so I wanted to make it clear to our community and underscore that there's a deep division here among residents and city council members about this proposed project going forward. Um, and at the last city council meeting, there was a three-to-two vote, and I confirmed that in our minutes. However, on page fifteen dash two, it says, "After hearing the recommendations and engaging in discussions, the city council wholly accepted the recommendations of the community." And so, depending on how you interpret that, the word wholly, meaning completely, it can be one of two ways, and I would really appreciate it if we were careful in praising this, because I think council member Wong and myself have been against this project, and the additional changes that continue to be made in county, and, uh, the expenses that are being incurred.
And I'm happy to clarify, council member, that wholly refers to the recommendation of the task force. The council, when they approved the site and barred three-to-two votes, indicates did not change any of the task force's recommendations.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there a motion regarding the sergeant?
Uh, I move to approve, and then come to question the side service group between our detective group. An increased compensation amount agreement is modified by amendment number one, by an additional forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars, appropriate forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars to account three nine four dash four oh dash four six zero zero dash one zero zero zero, San Reno Center renovation from the Capitol Reserve balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Do we have public comment on this matter, or do you do that?
Oh, you, you don't always do public comment on the consent items, but that certainly is mayor's question.
I don't know if anybody's present who wants to speak on it.
Is there anybody raising their hand?
There is nobody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good check.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Councilmember Shepard Ron?
No.
Councilwoman Tom?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
And may I?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We move to written communications, do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution?
No.
Is there anyone wishing, from the public, wishing to speak at this time? A reminder, the city council is not legally allowed to engage in a discussion on any items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who would like to speak?
There is nobody requesting a seat.
Thank you. From the city council, are there any items that the council would like to add to a future agenda? Hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting in one hour and fifty-nine minutes.